Check, check, check. So maybe if I forget, you can tell Armando and Lisa that we have to talk directly into the mic.
Hello?
He didn't say anything to me, but I don't know. Yes, yes, we have a forum. Six o'clock, is it six o'clock? Five fifty-nine. Call the meeting to order at 6:00 PM. I want to welcome everybody and thank you for being here tonight. We're going to start with the flag salute. And we have Jason Garcia and Nicholas Solorio, if you can come forward. Could the two of you tell us a little bit about yourselves? Start over.
Hi, my name is Jason Garcia. I'm in the fifth grade and I'm the president of our student council. And I'm here with my mom today, who was receiving an award for Teacher of the Year. And I really love our school. I think it's such a great school. And I'm really happy my mom was able to receive this award. Now let's hear it from our vice president.
Hello, I'm Nicholas Solorio. I'm the vice president for Laurel Elementary School. The people who brought me here is my mom over there filming me and my dad. My mom received an award last board meeting when we went to the East Whittier School District. Our school is a very unique place with many things kids like and so.
Thank you very much, thank you very much. I hope you all got a chance to see the beautiful murals that have been, there was one and then there was just another one on the other side. If you haven't had a chance, you've got to go see them, they're absolutely beautiful. And with that, we're going to do employee recognition. Dr. Vargas? I'm sorry. Mrs. Rivas?
Angela, you better come up here and join me. Good evening. Good evening Board, trustees, Dr. Vargas, Cabinet, and the East Whittier community. I am Roxanne Rivas, the proud principal at Laurel Elementary School. It is my honor to introduce Laurel Elementary School's Classified Employee of the Year, Angela Serrano. As our school office coordinator, Angela is often the first face families, staff, and students see when they walk through our school doors. And what a welcoming face it is. With a warm smile and a helpful spirit, Angela makes sure that everyone who walks into our school feels valued and supported. No matter the challenge, Angela approaches it with a can-do attitude. Always ready to assist, problem solve, and go the extra mile. Whether it's helping a family navigate a new school system, supporting staff with their endless requests, or ensuring our students have what they need to succeed, Angela does it all with kindness, professionalism, and heart. Angela, your dedication, positivity, and willingness to help do not go unnoticed. You embody the spirit of teamwork, excellence, and we are incredibly grateful for everything you do. Please join me in giving Angela a heartfelt congratulations as the well-deserved Classified Employee of the Month.
Thank you fellow staff members, Laurel community, friends, and board members. I am humbled and honored for this special award. It is very special to receive an award and to be recognized by the school, the team that I'm part of, where my very own children attended and went through this district. Laurel has an amazing team and I am honored now to be part of this amazing team and when I once served as a parent, as a token of my appreciation for everything they've given to my own children. I am extremely thankful to my family for always supporting me in all of my adventures. Once again, thank you so much for being recognized as Laurel's Classified Employee. Thank you, Mrs. Rivas, staff members, Laurel community, and district and board, thank you.
Come on up here, Mrs. Garcia. I can't give you as good of an introduction as Jason, he wins. It is my honor to introduce Laurel Elementary School's Certified Employee of the Year, Jessica Garcia. She is a highly respected teacher who is respected by students, parents, and colleagues alike. And her passion for teaching shines through in everything she does. Her impact extends way beyond the classroom. She has dedicated her time and talents to numerous programs that enrich the lives of our students, including Student Council Advisor, PBIS, Running Club, Tutoring, Avid Robotics, and Yearbook. And that's just to name a few, I know I'm forgetting some. Mrs. Garcia's creativity, organizational skills, and collaborative spirit have helped shape the culture of excellence here at Laurel. She approaches every challenge with dedication and heart, always going the extra mile to support her students and colleagues. Jessica, your unwavering commitment and passion make a lasting difference in the lives of so-so many. It is with great appreciation and admiration that we congratulate you as the well-deserved Certified Employee of the Month. Please join me in giving a huge round of applause for Mrs. Jessica Garcia.
Good evening, board members and staff, family. I have been very blessed to be part of this district for eighteen years. And it has been my privilege to call Laurel my home every one of those eighteen years. I started at Ocean View as a student teacher and then as luck would have it, was placed at Laurel for my second placement. I interviewed at Ocean View, at Evergreen, and then Laurel was my home-to-be. I have worked with amazingly wonderful teachers and staff in so many ways, be it on the clubs that Mrs. Rivas just named, on different grade levels, as classroom neighbors, or even as lunchtime cheese in my partners as we sit and talk about our days. Every staff member has supported me, encouraged me, pushed me to continue, even when the years were not the easiest. We have had many leaders in the years since I have been at Laurel and I can honestly say that working for and with our amazing leader, Mrs. Rivas, makes all the difference in the world. The Laurel teachers and staff have also been the best guidance and support for my little Laurel lion, who has been on campus since mommy and me and will be leaving me next year for the big world of the middle school. He is a smart, intelligent, independent, confident leader, who has had the very best teachers that I could have asked for. I feel as though this recognition is shared with my team, who make it easy to come to work every day. I am thankful to be a part of the best school in the district and hope to continue doing my best with the amazing students that I share my days with, thank you.
By the way, I love the pictures in front of the mural.
Thank you, yes, thank you. So our, this year, our school's motto is Lion Pride Era. So what does that mean? So we are in our Lion Pride Era this year, which represents a powerful commitment to fostering a supportive, inclusive, and thriving school community. We have Laurel Pride, what does that stand for? Prepared, respectful, inspiring kindness, demonstrating integrity, and making sure everyone is safe. These values that guide us as we come together to support every single student. From academics to social and emotional well-being, we are dedicated to meeting the unique needs of each and every one of our lions, ensuring that they feel seen, heard, and empowered. Through collaboration and encouragement and school spirit, we are building a culture where everyone can succeed and shine together. Together we will rise because we are in the Lion Pride Era. Every student matters, thank you.
Okay, now we're on to the longevity presentation. Dr. Vargas?
Good, here we go, good evening, can you hear me? Wonderful. Good evening, Board members, our cabinet, and our community. Today, I am excited and I do have the privilege of recognizing our employees who have met our longevity milestones. So this year, we went back to a tradition of honoring our employees who have given years of service to our district and our community. And today, I'm excited to recognize a couple of employees who have met some milestones. So we'll go ahead and skip over to the next slide, perfect. And we are starting off with a big one, twenty-five years of service. So when I call your name, please come up. I will be awarding our employees with a longevity pin. And we also have a EWCSD lanyard that we will be giving in them as well to kind of try to copy our Disneyland friends where you have all of your pins, you know, proudly shown with one piece of jewelry on your neck. So we're going to go ahead and call up Ms. Carrie Tippett, twenty-five years of service. Let's give her a big round of applause. Next, I want to welcome Anita Brown with twenty-five years of service. And next up with twenty-five years of service and a very beautiful picture, I must say, we have Jeffrey Barnett, twenty-five years, come on up. Thank you so much, just give them all a big round of applause. So we have also decided to honor all of our employees who have also met some milestones throughout the year, maybe not exactly this year, but past milestones. So we will be scheduling a staff meeting with the Laurel staff and we will be presenting all of these milestones, which basically are past twenty to forty years of service. And next year, we will be honoring all awardees that meet the milestone here at our Board of Education meeting. We just needed one year to do a catch-up, but we are all cut up after this year. So next year, we will be bringing everybody up to board. So let's give them a big round of applause for our twenty to forty years. And then we also have our babies with ten years of service, fifteen years of service, and then our past ten to fifteen years of service as well. We look forward to celebrating all of you at our next staff meeting here at Laurel Elementary, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Vargas. Okay, we will move on to the approval of the minutes. I'm sorry. We will move on to the approval of the minutes.
I move the recommendation that the Board of Education approved the February third, two thousand twenty-five Board of Education minutes.
Okay, I have a first and a second, is there any discussion or corrections to the minutes?
No.
Okay, I'll call for the question, Mr. Tiaga?
Yes.
Mr. Aparicio?
Yes.
Mrs. Dabs?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carrera?
Yes.
And I vote yes, okay, so they are approved. We will move on to board member reports and comments, I'll start with Ms. Hernandez.
Sorry, I have to pull my notes up. All right, there we go. Thank you, Jason, can you guys hear me? Right there? Is that good? There we go, okay. Thank you, Jason and Nicholas, for leading us in the pledge. I have had the honor to meet and conversate with both of them at our student advisory meetings. And you guys were very well spoken up there. So I just want to recognize you guys for that and I want to thank you guys for leading us in the pledge. Congratulations to all of our recognized staff. I'm seeing a lot of big years up there, so thank you all for sticking with our schools, staying within our district and just believing in all of our students. Thank you all for that because I understand that if it's hard for a student to get up every day, it's even harder for staff to get up every day. So thank you all for that. Tomorrow, I will be attending the EWCSD Leadership Summit. Basically, what that is, is all of our ASB and such attend our Leadership Summit for the district. And we just get to go to workshops and learn a little bit more about leadership, it's a very, very cool thing. I went in sixth grade when I was in ASB. So I am honored to represent the Board at that summit. At Hillview, at their award ceremony for perfect attendance and GPA recognition, students received a ticket to get a water balloon. With this water balloon, they got to throw them at Mr. Cunningham. I talked to a few Hillview students and from what I heard, they had a blast. I also saw a picture sent by Mr. Cunningham and let's just say, I would have loved to have joined in all that fun, it looked amazing. And at Lockalima, the Whittier Public Library visits monthly for a read aloud with TK students. I think that this is beautiful and a really good idea for the students and I believe that it must really help in their developmental stage with reading and such. So I just thought that was something really nice to share. I hope you guys have a wonderful meeting and thank you guys for coming.
Thank you. Mr. Tiaga?
Yeah, thank you very much. I just want to thank our Laurel families and thank you for having our board meeting here this evening. It's nice to be able to get to different sites and see the different areas. So thank you for welcoming us, Ms. Rivas, and the staff for preparing tonight and of course, our district staff for the task of having to move a board meeting like this. So thank you very much for all that hard work and dedication for that. Want to congratulate both Ms. Serrano and Ms. Garcia. Congratulations on your recognitions for Employee of the Year, well deserved. And definitely want for our service pin awardees who have spent many years here in the district and a lot of them it sounds like have been here at Laurel. So it's great to be able to have those recognitions for our staff, congratulations. And it's nice to be able to have those types of things for our employees. Let's see, Friday, I will be able to attend the Star Award Breakfast coming up in Liberty Plaza and recognizing our students and a lot of great things that our staff and our students are doing here in the district. So I'll be able to attend that, I'm not sure, Belinda, if I send that message to you, so I'm telling you now. I was supposed to probably get that earlier, but I'll be able to make it there, so looking forward to that. And then as I look at the agenda and it's coming up towards that time of the year where we're starting to have like the separation or retirements of those employees that are, you know, making that decision to move on for their career for many great years they've done to the district. And as I look at the list of names that are there today, and there'll be more coming as the board meetings come up, but seeing some of those big names on there, you know, the first three, first four, I mean, all of the names are very important to us. But I know when I first came to the district, Mr. Martinez, Ms. Michelle, and Mr. Madrigán, you know, who are teachers that stood out in the district and I see their names, one, two, three, on the retirement list for thirty, thirty-five years in the district. So I want to thank them for their years of service to the East Whittier City School District and wish them best of luck. But they're still going to be around for several, a couple more months. But yeah, it's sad to see some of our longtime, really liked teachers leave the district. And so, thank you very much for that, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Aparicio?
Yes, good evening, everyone, just want to say, first of all, welcome. Thank you all for joining us. And Ms. Rivas, thank you for, you and your Laurel staff for hosting us today here. I also want to say thank you to Jason and Nicholas for leading us in the pledge and for being good leaders here at your school. So thank you for that. Congratulations to Ms. Serrano, Ms. Garcia for being our Teacher of the Year and Classified Employee of the Year. So once again, congrats on that. I was able to attend the IWE dinner a few weeks ago, about a week and a half ago or so. So another great event, I definitely really appreciate attending with Missy and her staff, so everybody from the IWE cabinet. Thank you for making that a great event for us. Like I said, I definitely always look forward to attending those events, so I definitely appreciate it. So Missy, thank you very much for that. And then just lastly, I'm also looking forward to attending the Student Leadership Summit tomorrow at WAC. So that's another great, great event for our students. Like I said, I definitely appreciate going to that every single year, so I'm just looking forward to that for tomorrow. And that's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Dabs?
Okay, I got to make sure that I'm sitting closer. Good evening to everybody and as Mr. Aparicio shared, thank you so much for joining us this evening here at Laurel. And thank you too, Mrs. Rivas, for hosting us, we're very, very appreciative. And I want to thank also our Laurel students, Jason Garcia and Nicholas Solorio, for leading our flag salute. Congratulations to our Laurel Employees of the Year, Angela Serrano and Jessica Garcia, for everything you do, as I say, pretty much at every meeting. Your commitment and dedication to the children, the staff, the community is so important and it means so much to everybody, even though sometimes you might not feel like it is so, so important. And I thank you so very much for all of it. I also want to give congrats to all our employees who have earned their longevity. It's a wonderful opportunity to be able to say that you've done so much for so many children over so many years and that you're still here, you're still working hard, and you're still excited about being here. So thank you again for your longevity and your commitment and dedication. I also want to say a special congrats to Mrs. Rivas for the beautiful murals. I know several of us that are here were at the recent mural dedication you did last year and it was so beautiful. And I also want to thank your PTA and their commitment to you and the school and the children and the students and the parents. I know they're a big part of making that happen. And I also want to thank our supervisor because I know that she has also promised to dedicate some more resources to a second mural. So we hope that those will be coming, but you know, keep us posted if you need a little help with us giving her a little nudge. No problem there. I also want to say thank you to IWE for the dinner that I attended alongside some of my other colleagues. It was beautiful, the CSBA dinner along with IWE. Representatives from CSBA and NEA were there and it was really great to have them hear the voices of those of us that have some concerns. I spoke publicly, but then others spoke privately. And their concerns are, if you don't know, of the potential dismantling of the Department of Education. This cannot be treated lightly, it's very, very serious. So please inform yourselves so you know what could potentially be ahead of us. I won't get into details about what would happen if that happens. But you need to know that the National Education Association, alongside each and every state teachers association, is fighting very hard to ensure that our Department of Education does not become dismantled. So again, I really want to thank IWE for the opportunity to be there, it was really a great event. And to talk with some amazing teachers that we typically don't get a chance to talk to, it was really great. I also want to say that I will be attending the Student Leadership Summit tomorrow and I'm really excited for that. Also, I want to say thank you for the opportunity to be a judge alongside some of my colleagues last week for the speech contest, it was absolutely incredible. I can't wait until we have our two winners come and speak. But having been a speech contest winner myself when I was in the eighth grade, I know the hard work that goes into preparing for that. And it was just so incredibly beautiful, as it's been for the last three or four years now, to be a judge and to hear each and every one of our students representing their schools. I know that if you come to a meeting to hear that soon, you will also be so impressed with the passion that our students have for their speeches. I'm also looking forward to, I also want to share one last thing. If you have any family members or you know of any family members or neighbors who are concerned, Linda Sanchez, who is our Congresswoman, is hosting a Know Your Rights Zoom meeting this coming Friday at 7:00 PM. You can Google it on her webpage and the information will come up. All are welcome to partake. I participated last week and there were six community members from Whittier. Amongst the many, there were over a thousand listeners, but six actually spoke from Whittier. And I was very impressed with that because her area is very vast. But I want you to know that if you do come to that meeting, you will have a pre-opportunity to say that you would like to speak and ask a question. It was very supportive to hear her actually speak to us, her actually answering questions. When do we actually have that opportunity? The answer to that is never. So, if you have a concern, or you have family members, again, who have a concern about their rights, I want you to know that she is making every opportunity to make sure that she is available to us. And other questions were asked, such as what will happen if the Department of Education gets dismantled? So, it's not just about rights per se, but it's about things that are happening at the administrative level here in the United States. So, please, if you're interested, Google her webpage, and that information will come up. Thank you so much.
Okay. I also want to thank Jason and Nicholas for leading us in the flag salute. Congratulations to the Employees of the Year and to the longevity, the people who've been here forever. Thank you. But I wanted to tell you, the reason I started off with that little trivia question is because on Sunday, I was a judge for the American Legion Oratorical Contest. And I just want everybody to know that, that if you participate, you can participate from, if you're a freshman, all the way till you're a senior. And if you win that contest, you can win like $25,000. It's a national contest, but I'm not going to sugarcoat it. It's really difficult, and it's on the Constitution. So, you know, if you can tell your students, get ready, because it's, we had one, we only had one student to participate on Sunday. There was another student who didn't show up because she got scared. But it's really tough. Eight to 10 minutes on any subject on the Constitution. You cannot use a single note. And then, there's an extemporaneous question. They pull out of a hat. You have five minutes to prepare for that. You don't know what it is, and you can have to talk on that for three to five minutes. It's extremely difficult, but you know what? If you start when you're a freshman, tell your students or your brothers and sisters, you could, you could do a good job, and you could win. My daughter won at two years, and she paid for her first year of college with that money. So, you know, there's possibilities. So, please, you know, it's on the Constitution, any aspect of the Constitution. So, that's why I did the, the trivia. So, hopefully, there'll be some interest in that. Because I know the man from Post 51 here in Whittier has a lot of trouble getting kids interested, because it is really tough, but win a lot of money. So, anyway, with that, that's it. Oh, I forgot. Ms. Carrera? Sorry.
Okay. Can you guys hear me? Yeah. I'm not enough without a mic. At any rate, congratulations to everybody who was acknowledged tonight. Jason Garcia and Nicholas Solario. You know, I could never stand in front of a lot of people and speak. It's still difficult for me to speak in front of people, and I, I do it all the time, but it's still difficult. Angela Serrano and Jessica Garcia, congratulations to you as well, and to everybody who has gone through the journey at the district for 20 or more years. I was also a judge at speech competition along with Ms. Debs and Ms. Chacon Kennedy. And I, all I can say is, I applaud, I applaud these young students for going up there. You know, they had the prompt of, you know, what, if you were a superhero or if you had superhero powers, what would they be? And to be quite frank, I, I wouldn't know what I, what my superpower would be. But that night, they were my superheroes. And all of their speeches were to be acknowledged. All of their speeches were winners to me. To your point, Ms. Chacon Kennedy, while we're on the speech topic, I'm not sure if you're aware, but all of our three middle schools now have the National Junior Honor Society, which then lingers over to the National Honor Society. So, I don't know if that speech competition that you judge, if it's even feasible for eighth grade students, maybe?
I, I think you can participate as an eighth grader.
Maybe. So, maybe, I don't, I don't know. Maybe that's something we can look into, perhaps for our own students. I also attended the EWI, CTA, NEA dinner and was able to, you know, mingle there. And it was, it was a really nice event, very nice event, very nice to get to know one another. And as some of you will say, I talked your ears off on a personal level. It wasn't on a meeting level. Last thing I have for you is, Mrs. Debs beat me to it, the Linda Sanchez thing, but it's okay. We're a team. So, the last thing is, Laxa will be hosting their meeting on the 24th at Paramount High School at 6:00. There'll be tacos if you guys want to go. And they will be speaking about math and how to close the achievement gap. And two CSBA Board Directors from Sacramento will be flying down to give updates on what's going on with legislation. And with that, I cease my comments.
Okay, thank you. On to, oh. We're going to take a short break, so five minutes, and we need the, all the, the board winners and everything. So, we'll take a five-minute break. I'm going to call the meeting back to order. Okay, we're on to our next item. CSEA comments?
Good evening, members of the board and everyone here. I am Joe from the IT Department, and I am also the VP for our CSEA chapter. Just a few brief comments for tonight. So, congratulations to Ms. Serrano and Mrs. Garcia for being recognized as Employees of the Year. It's always super awesome. And congratulations to Ms. Tippett and Mr. Jeff for 25 years of public service. That is an awfully long time, and there's an awfully lot of public good and work for the community. So, that's fantastic. So, the only item I really wish to discuss tonight, unfortunately, is item five on the agenda, layoff of classified employees. So, we understand the need for the, for, for the district to maintain fiscal viability. However, it's always definitely a sad and somewhat disheartening day when we're faced with the prospect of losing some of our hard-working brothers and sisters, especially considering the classifications on the docket tonight. So, alls that we ask and we really hope for is, we, we hope to be able to continue to work with the district to make sure that these folks can land somewhere within the district and stay part of the EWCSD family. Thank you.
Thank you. On to EWEA?
Hello, everyone. I hope everyone is doing great. My name is Missy Michelle, and I am representing the East Whittier Education Association. And hello to everyone. And Superintendent Patterson, your hair has grown out, and it looks great. Looks fabulous. I like it. Okay. Congratulations to everyone who was honored today, and thank you to everyone who is here. I, I have a couple of things that I wanted to bring up because they're interesting. Well, one of them is, we have these kids that we call no-contact kids. They are kids who, for whatever reason, aren't supposed to be around each other. But the, the office keeps those kids in the same classroom. We've been told, these are no-contact kids. They're still going to be in your room, but you now have to make sure that they don't even, like, look at each other. The problem with that is, you know, we're working in groups where we're intermingling in our classrooms. We're doing all of these great things, but we have no-contact kids who the only person who has to pay attention to the contact is the actual teacher. If these kids aren't supposed to be around each other, shouldn't their schedules be changed so that the situation is fixed, rather than dropping them into a class of 30, 35, and telling the teacher that, oh, by the way, these kids can't get near each other, so everything you do in class, you now have to, it just doesn't make sense. If they're no-contact, get them out of the, dump it on the teacher to then have to try to maintain order when admin already knows there is a situation here to where kids... when admin already knows there is a situation here to where kids had to sign a contract for something. So I really think that if they're no contact kids, admin needs to step up and get them out of contact with each other. And this kind of goes off... We had someone, a teacher, who had a kid attack. And the teacher wanted to suspend the student for three days, which they're entitled to by ed code. But they were told that if they wanted to do that, they had to do all the paperwork. They had to do all of the meetings and they had to do all the notifications. Generally, that's not how that works. And we're just hoping that this was a one-off and that our admin will be supporting our teachers, especially those who are being beat up. Which leads me to we have our behaviors. It's not sped kids. It's all of our kids. We have issues and no one should ever be told that you're a sped teacher. So you have to expect that you will be bit, hit, pinched, kicked, spit on, and your classroom will be trashed on a regular basis. That should not be an expectation for any of our teachers, ever, ever, ever. And we just want... We want our people to feel safe. We want them to be comfortable, which takes us into the dress code issue. People are not comfortable on campus with the way dress code is. So please, as soon as the sun comes out, I'm going to invite all of you to come and check out the middle school campuses during the daytime, just so you can see what we're talking about. Then restrooms. These are little people restrooms. We have some big ticket items up there on the agenda for tonight that are dealing with restrooms, but not at all the sites. And our concern is, I know that some of our sites only have one TK class right now, but next year they're all going to have three, I mean, excuse me, two, and they're going to have three-year-olds. So when we're talking about bathrooms around the corner down the hall, if you have a three-year-old right here and you're just trying to get him out that door, they're not going to make it. And we have to figure something out for these kids. We have to figure something out for these teachers. And the routes can't be through other classrooms and down around the corner at the end of the wing. I think we really need to accommodate our students a little bit better. And we have time right now to think about it since all of our schools are going to be having little teeny tiny people next year. Okay, then there was one more thing. This one was funny. I got a call and the folks wanted to know, how do they sign up to have a board meeting at their campus? Because they want the beautification to happen at their sites, too. They do. That's what they asked me. They really did. Okay, thanks, you guys. And I really want to thank you for coming out to the sites. It's nice to be able to see what the sites have to offer. And it's nice that we get at least the staffs from here come in and stay and get to hear what's going on. So we appreciate that and we hope you guys do it more often. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we're on to superintendent comments and we have Dr. Vargas.
Hello and good evening, everyone. And yes, as Missy pointed out, I'm not Dr. Patterson, but I am very happy to be here with you guys today. And on behalf of all of us, we just want to thank Laurel, their community and PTA for their hospitality today. Do have to say the murals look amazing and we love that era theme. And you are living the best era, so congratulations on that as well. Just wanted to congratulate all of our employees that are being recognized tonight, whether it's for longevity or being employees of the year. Like we've mentioned before, we are so appreciative of just the long-term commitment and dedication to our school sites and our community. We know that that does make a difference for our students and their families. So thank you so much for that as well. And then just as an update, because I know Ms. Michaux just mentioned that a little bit today. We have been doing some work regarding our TK, planning for the 25, 26 school year, and just wanted to give you an update. We were able to meet with our principals last Thursday to discuss the TK expansion goals for next year. Also, Dr. Acevis was able to talk a little bit about classroom placement for next year, things to consider based on the feedback. And all principals will be bringing back a detailed facility map with specific classroom placements so that we can make informed decisions for next year when we place our TK classrooms. And in addition to that, we are working with CSEA. We did have the opportunity to bring in our transitional kindergarten instructional aides who work with students every day to get their input and feedback in the areas of behavior, you know, toileting needs. Just, you know, the needs have really evolved and we understand that. And so we got some incredible feedback that we did turn over to Dr. Acevis, who will be working with her team and forming a committee pretty soon just to make sure that we do have a plan outlined for next year because we do acknowledge that the needs are changing year to year. And we will have little ones that are even little, more little than the ones that we currently have right now. So we just wanted to give you that update as well. So thank you so much for your input.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Vargas. Okay, on to citizen communication.
Okay, and we do have three speakers. What I'm going to do is I'm going to have all of the speakers line up in this order. You do have three minutes to address the board. We have Jessica Will, Emily Aiden Murphy, and Mr. Brent Vogelmann. So I'm going to invite all of you guys to go to the podium and then we will speak in that order. And just give me a second so I can get my timer ready to go. And... I don't think I'm going to take the whole three minutes, so I think you're...
Okay.
But tell me when you're ready.
Yes, we'll do. Here we go.
Can you hear me? Yes, okay. Good evening, board members. My name is Jessica Will and I am the transitional kindergarten teacher at Scott Avenue. I have worked in this district for 17 years. And I am here tonight because a critical safety issue affecting my students remains unresolved. Two weeks ago, I spoke to you about the lack of restroom in or near my TK classroom. I outlined how this creates a safety concern for our youngest students, puts our class out of compliance with the 1 to 12 adult-to-student ratio, and how other schools have received accommodations while Scott Avenue has not. I followed the proper chain of command. I asked for help. I was told my concerns were being worked on. But since then, no one has followed up with me. Parents have received responses, yet the teacher responsible for these students every day has not. How is it acceptable that the district is communicating with parents while leaving the teacher who is directly impacted in the dark? My students' safety, my ability to do my job effectively, and our compliance with state mandated ratios is still at risk. And I am still waiting for an answer. Would you want your own child or grandchild in a classroom where safety concerns are ignored? Where a teacher follows every correct step, asks for support, and is met with silence? And looking ahead to August, when TK expands to include three-year-olds, this issue will only become more urgent. How do we expect three-year-olds to navigate a campus and classroom environment safely when we haven't provided the necessary accommodations for our current students? I am here again asking for a solution, whether that means constructing a restroom near the TK classroom, providing a portable restroom with age-appropriate toilets, or another viable option. Something must be done this year. An immediate step that could help with would be providing a second aid, funded by the district, to ensure we maintain the proper 1 to 12 ratio while allowing students to use the restroom safely. I have done everything I was supposed to do. I have waited. I have followed up. And yet, here I am, still waiting for a response. How much longer will this take? I urge you to act now. Our students deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Emily Aiden Murphy, a parent here at Laurel, also an alum. And on behalf of Laurel PTA, I have several thank yous to express. First, a little backstory. You've done some of our job by mentioning the murals several times, so thank you for that. Last year, 120 student members of the Laurel Mural Club collaborated with Whittier artist Dennis McGonigal to paint a mural called Mystic Jungle. And at our mural dedication last February, a representative from LA County Supervisor Janice Hahn's office, Mr. Ivan Sulick, was so taken with the Laurel Mural Club that he and Ms. Hahn pledged money to continue the project. This fall, after a long grant request process, Laurel PTA received a $7,000 grant from Supervisor Hahn for Laurel Mural Club and Dennis McGonigal to create more original art for the benefit of our school as well as the greater Whittier community. This grant, combined with PTA monies fundraised by Laurel families, made it possible for us to commission not just one, but two new murals next to Mystic Jungle. And right now, we have 140 students working in small groups every Tuesday afternoon with Dennis McGonigal to create public art. So that's the story now for the big thank yous. Laurel PTA thanks our principal, our wonderful principal, Mrs. Rivas, yes, for listening to our scheme to let Laurel students paint the walls of Laurel and then remarkably saying yes to that. We want to thank the East Whittier City School District for saying yes when Mrs. Rivas asked for help to carry out this wild project. Thank you especially to Ben Lopez and Coco, the district painter, for supporting us with wall paint preparation and the use of district scaffolding. Thank you to Dennis McGonigal, the best artist, teacher, partner we could have ever imagined. If you haven't done so already, be sure to check out his art retrospective at the Whittier Museum, happening right now through April. And finally, Laurel PTA thanks LA County Supervisor Janice Hahn for her very generous financial assistance. Ms. Hahn's brilliant investment in Laurel's students and our surrounding community is greatly appreciated by us all. And we invite the board and district administrators to stop by any Tuesday at 1:30 between now and April 1st to check out Mural Club. And if you wear paint clothes, you can even get in on the action. In other matters, I just personally want to thank the East Whittier Arts Education Foundation and the district for putting on the district talent show just recently. Both of my kids participated. And in particular, Mr. Eddie Viella and Emily DeLeo from the district and Mrs. Virginia Ball from the Arts Foundation worked so hard to put on a great show. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Just want to thank Roxy for having us here. Roxy was our assistant principal at East Whittier Middle School several years ago, right around COVID times, when she came to Laurel for bigger and better things. And all I've heard from the Laurel staff is they rave about you. But I do have one thing to nitpick. Where's the Cal State Fullerton banner in here? Oh, who took it? Well, it'd be nice to see it back up, Cal State Fullerton grads. I just came up here to thank the board members that came to the CTA dinner. I had Jen Stamfull, was that last week or two weeks ago? And it was two weeks ago and time flies. So we just want to thank you guys for doing that or for coming. Mr. Urteaga, Dr. Patterson is not here tonight. We hope you can make it next time because we want to make it an annual thing. It's nice to see everybody outside the context of a board meeting or work. So it was nice to have conversations with everybody in a more informal context. So we want to keep it up as a union and with some of our union members retiring, there's new blood, like me, Jen, and some others that want to keep this thing going so we can have conversations outside of work and not about it and sometimes about it. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, on to discussion items. Item one. Who's doing this? Okay, it'll be Dr. Vargas.
Okay, next what we're going to do is we do have a spotlight video. And tonight, we will be looking at an update from our nutrition services department. So let's cross our fingers and make sure our video works.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kristi Ford, Director of Nutrition Services with the East Whittier City School District.
And I'm Lauren Akisawa, Assistant Director of Nutrition Services at East Whittier School.
And today, we're here to talk to you about our Share Station program. Lunchtime is a time for students to refill, recharge, and connect with friends. But sometimes students take more food than they can eat, and importantly, they spend that money trash.
Starting this month, shared table cards will be made available to all students during the service. This will be an opportunity for students to play with unopened or uneaten items in the shared cards.
This could be played by unopened milk cartons, juice boxes, and even whole fruit.
Only unopened and cold and fruit culture, and potentially eaten here. No hot ice cream. Fresh fruit must be cold and unpinked, like bananas and oranges.
Instead of throwing away the unopened food items, they can be shared with someone who might be hungry or who just wants a little something else.
This is a simple way to reduce waste and help others at the same time.
The Share Station program is a win-win for everyone. It helps reduce waste, it provides additional nutrition for students that are new, and it builds a stronger school community.
I, for one, want to thank the district for that because I hate to waste anything. So I think that's fantastic. And I did read about it, how you can't, there's certain things you can and cannot share. But this is a big step toward a lot less waste and I'm so happy to see it. Thank you.
Yeah, I agree as well. It's hard to, you know, being when I was at the site, seeing the food, kids just tossing full meals or sometimes that sharing, so at least something can be shared.
Any more comments?
No, I think, I just think it's really great that everybody is sharing whatever it is that they're not using. You know, whatever they're not eating or they don't want on their tray, somebody else might want it. So I might just cruise on by. No, I'm kidding.
Okay, on to item two.
I move the recommendation after Board of Education vote for up to five candidates for the 2025 California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly.
A second? Okay, I have a first and a second. Any discussion? There are, I think, what, there's only five candidates? So any discussion from anybody?
So are we just voting for all five?
Everybody want to vote for all five? Anybody have somebody they don't want to vote for?
I think we're only presented with these five, right?
Yeah.
I move that we vote for all five.
A second? Okay, all right. Then no more discussion. I'll call for the question. Mrs. Dabs?
Yes.
Ms. Raparicio?
Yes.
Mr. Urteaga?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carrera?
Yes.
And I vote yes, so that passes. On to item three.
I move the recommendation to Resolution Number 11-24/25, canvassing the results of general obligation bond election held within the district on November 5th, 2024, be adopted by the Board of Education.
A second? Okay, I have a first and a second. Have some discussion?
Is there anything to share on this one or... Okay.
So this is related to Measure C and we had to have a 55%... This is related to Measure C and it had to pass by a vote of 55%, which it did. And what this is doing is the board is certifying the election results.
What was the final percent we got?
I am so sorry.
What was the final percent?
I think it was 62, but I'll check and send it to you.
No, no.
It passed.
Yeah, it passed.
Okay, anything else anybody has?
Mr. Elson, we also have item four and it's related. Can you give us a quick summary and then I'll go ahead and talk a little bit about the correction?
Sure. So this resolution is the board approving that we sell $27 million of bonds. The total bond that passed was 97 million, but this first issuance will be for 27 million.
Okay, we're going to vote on item three first, okay?
Correct.
Anybody have any, anything else to say on item three? Okay, I'll call for the question. Ms. Carrera?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mrs. Dabs?
Yes.
Mr. Aparicio?
Yes.
Mr. Urteaga?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Now on to item four.
Yeah, I so move item number four. Second?
Okay, I have a first and a second. Any discussion on this one? Or anything to say on this one?
This is the one.
Ms. Earl, would you like, I'm sorry, would you like to give us a summary on number four? And we actually do have a correction. There was a clerical issue in the document provided by our legal team, where it says 27,500,000 was referenced versus the correct dollar amount of 27 million. So we are asking that the board approve this resolution with that change.
So this was an error by the legal?
Yes.
Our legal, okay.
Are they donating that extra $500,000 maybe?
They are not, sadly.
No? Okay.
Okay, so it-
This number four is basically the board will be approving Atkins and Anderson as the bond counsel.
So we're going to approve it with that correction?
Yes.
Okay. Does the board understand that?
We're approving 27 million.
Yes.
Now, the question with the lawyer side, I guess you're using that same firm for other personnel matters, but this is specifically only for bond, bond requirements?
Right, this specific resolution that you're voting on tonight is just for bond-related legal services.
But the, but the team, it's another partner in that, that's just specifically dealing with, with bond stuff, right? Okay.
Anything else? Okay, I'll call for the question. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Dabs?
Yes.
Mr. Aparicio?
Yes.
Ms. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Tiaga?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Okay, that passes. On to item five.
I move the recommendation at the Board of Education, adopt Resolution Number 14 dash 24 slash 25 regarding reduction or elimination of classified employee or classified personnel.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Discussion?
For clarification purposes, when it says the vacant position, that means that that person is not going to be hired. Yeah?
Yes, so that position became vacant this year, so we're not filling it at this point.
And it's the same with the district office clerk, too?
So we have one intensive behavior support assistant, which is vacant. They did resign earlier this month, and then the vacant position, they went, they, they applied and did get another position in the district, so we're leaving that vacant position as well.
So these numbers here are, are accurate?
Yes, they are.
So we've got five, one, one. Perfect, thank you.
Anything else for anybody? Okay, I'll call for the question. Mr. Tiaga?
No.
Mr. Aparicio?
Yes.
Mrs. Dabs?
Yes.
Ms. Carrera?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
And I sadly vote yes. On to item six. Oh, it passes. Four, one. Four eyes, one no. Okay. On to item six.
I move the recommendation that the Board of Education adopt Resolution Number 15 dash 24 slash 25 regarding reduction or discontinuements of particular kinds of service.
I'll second.
Okay, discussion?
I too have a discussion.
Okay.
Question for Dr. Vargas. So Dr. Vargas, these individual positions that are, we're voting on to potentially discontinue, are any of these folks eligible to get reabsorbed in the district, like as a teacher, or they are, so?
Yes, so the teacher on special assignment, per our CBA, they are guaranteed a position back at the school sites. So we are working on staffing at the moment, and we are looking at their credentials. We also did meet with them, just to kind of go back there to their history. We do our best, intend to get them to the school where they originally come from. And if not, if that's not possible, we definitely look at what they taught before, and we try to find the best placement for them based on the positions that we have available in the district.
But that would not necessarily be true for directors, right? Because when you step into administration, I mean, I know this, having been a principal for 15 years, you lose, unless they were teachers in our district, right? Then you lose your, your ability to get rehired as a teacher, so.
Yes, for our administrative positions, specifically the directors that are up there, that position is being eliminated, and they will have to apply for another position.
And the ELOP one, the director two, that's the one where we approve to turn to coordinator, correct?
That is correct.
Yes, okay. And then just the final director, the secondary education services, that's currently the one, if I'm not mistaken, that we had, we hired temporary for two years-
That is correct.
And then had the option to return.
Yes.
To a, yes, okay.
Anything else? Any other discussion? Okay, I will call for the question. Mrs. Dabs?
Yes.
Mr. Aparicio?
Yes.
Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carrera?
Yes.
Mr. Urteaga?
Yes.
And I vote yes, as it passes 5-0. On to item seven.
I move the recommendation at the Board of Education, approve the overnight field trips for Hillview Middle School as admitted.
I'll second.
Any discussion? I have a first and a second now. Any discussion?
I, just to clarify on the chaperones, it's a 1 to 10 ratio, right? About? Dr. Sevis, do you have that information?
Well-
Yeah, it's about that, right?
Yeah, because there's 60 students.
Because it's 60 students and six-
And six chaperones.
Yeah.
We might have more?
Okay.
We try to split the line a bit.
Uh-huh. And this is, this is probably like just a crazy question, but the students going to Catalina Island, do they all know how to swim?
Not a lot.
I know, I, okay. I just, it's just something that I'm, just a safety thing that I, I have, because I can't swim. Okay, thank you.
Well, if they're going to Catalina Island, wouldn't they have to wear a life preserver?
The safety.
Of course, yeah. They have to.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, I, for one, I'm excited to see that this is happening. I think the kids are going to love it. And I, I also, because I've been doing this for a long, you know, approving this, but I thought, well, I need to ask, so even if the kids miss coming to school, they're still in school?
Correct.
Yeah, they're learning.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Right, right. Okay, I just, and I don't know, I never thought of that. Like, wait a minute.
So-
Yes, yes. But this is really great, and I'm, I just, I'm so excited for the kids.
Exciting. One question I do have, so our normal transportation is bus, but once we go on water, do we have to get any type of other insurance, or our current coverage covers that?
Our insurance covers it.
It does? Okay, okay.
Anything else, anybody? Okay, I'll call for the question. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carrera?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Urteaga?
Yes.
Mrs. Dabs?
Yes.
And Mr. Aparicio?
Yes.
Okay, passes 5-0. Okay, on to consent items. Does anybody want to remove anything from the consent agenda? Okay.
So I move the recommendation at the Board of Education, approve the consent agenda items J3 through J10.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a first and a second. Discussion?
And I think this is where my question was, should have been than the other one, about Anderson, Atkinson, the lawyer firm for the, for the bond. So this particular one, they're only working for bond-related stuff. There, are they used for anything else but bond-related stuff? This is for, on item 179?
179.
Business for the contract for, is that?
Just, just to be clear, we use Atkins and Anderson for many different services, but this particular item is only bond-related.
So, okay, so they have to separate that, okay?
Yes, they fill separately.
And for 181, the sources lottery, can you just clarify what that mean? I don't know what that means. Pro Jigsaw Learning LLC, DB, they're doing DBA as TeachTown?
They're using lottery funds for curriculum materials.
Uh-huh.
And that's something we use lottery, we utilize the lottery funding. That's one of our funding sources for curriculum materials. And so this, this is going to be new curriculum materials that we will pilot for our extended support needs classrooms.
Where do these lottery funds come from?
They come from the state.
The state lottery in California?
I will make sure that I defer to the-
My, my, my dollar goes here.
To my left, but the lottery, generated by lottery, California State Lottery. We have two lottery resources. One is restricted lottery, and one is unrestricted.
Okay.
So the one Dr. Sevis is talking about is restricted lottery, which is for curriculum.
Okay.
And then there's unrestricted, that can be basically for pretty much anything, but it's all from the state lottery.
Okay, so then it doesn't matter if it says restricted or unrestricted on here, the lottery?
Not for this purpose.
No, for this, perfect. Thank you.
Do you get those funds at the same time every year?
So what's a little bit bad is everyone thinks the lottery gives all extra money, but what happens is whatever amount you get from the lottery gets taken from your LCFF.
Jesus.
But it does all come at the same time.
Yeah, okay, all right. Okay, and I have a question on, let's see, item number four, on the 25 dash 1803, the library system for all sites for 16,78344. I just need to know what, what is that?
So that's the follet system that each library uses?
The, the what?
That's the follet, follet system that all the libraries use. Mm-hmm.
Follet.
Are you talking about 1803, the second from the bottom?
Yeah.
Did I misunderstand?
No, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, 1803, yes. So what is it now, the?
So now I'm going to-
That's the name of the program, I think, that they use.
Want to talk a little bit about what follet does?
Thank you.
With all the experts in the world.
We just wanted you to get to the mic, yeah.
Okay, so, so follet is the company, follet destiny is the product, it's the library system, it's the catalog of all the books that are at schools. So even though we're mostly online, we still have books at the schools. This is how the teachers can go in there, log into the system, and see what books are available, and give the books to the students, assign the books to the students.
Okay.
Still in use.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's see here. Let me see if I have any more questions. Okay, go ahead, no, go ahead.
Thank you, Mrs. Kennedy. I have another question, and I've always wanted to ask this, and I think I have, a long time ago, but I'm going to ask it again, because I think Mrs. Chacon Kennedy had a good thought when she's talking about not having waste. So whenever these disposable or disposal issues come up, my question is, are they just disposed of? Are they recycled? Are they donated? I mean, like, if a baker's rack is still okay, but it's not okay for our school, is it donated, or is everything sent to the dump?
We have a recycling service that we have an agreement with, and they pick those up.
Okay, perfect. Thank you so much. And the laptops are done in that electronic disposal situation, too, or?
Yes.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Okay, anything else anybody has to say?
I did have a question on number nine.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, let me bring it up. So I, I understand that common practice is, you know, leave of absence, and normally you put everything together in one, right? Some of the teachers that do job shares and items like that are listed under leave of absence. I, I, I don't know, I, I come from a, a different space. So when there's a leave of absence, it means you can, how can I say this, kind of let the, let the person go if something should occur. I, I was wondering if, if the board, I would like to recommend, that if, if it's possible for those job shares to have their own title or classification. Like, I understand the whole FTE, FTES and all that stuff, and how it falls into, into it. But a leave of absence is, is something that can be skewed. I'm trying to find the proper term, so that it, I don't sound like I, I don't know what I'm talking about, but I do. So I under, I understand that every single one of these teachers are job sharing, and that they're only there half the time, or 20% of the time, or whatever their FTE, FTES may be. But classifying them as having a leave of absence, I think, is something to consider. Maybe having them classified as something else.
Could I ask Dr. Rice, could you clarify that for her, please?
So if I can clarify, so our leaves, leaves of absence are protected leaves, so that we, we do offer the benefit, and it is protected. The reason why we have them listed and we approve them is that it is, does require approval from the school site administrator as well as the district. However, it is unpaid leave, because they're choosing to work part-time, but it does protect them. So if that changes, every year, we give them the opportunity to request to continue the leave, and if they do not request it, then there is a place for them to return.
Okay, so then they're not, we, there's no loophole where we can, we can let the teacher go, or let the?
No, and usually, these teachers have been with us for a while, so they have seniority, and they do have a place on the seniority list. So if we're talking about a layoff or something that were to happen, they still have their place on the seniority list. So this is just their personal decision to share a contract, because that's, in essence, what they're doing. When they see a 50% unpaid leave, it's because they're sharing one contract with another person.
Right.
And, and so there is an agreement that for that school year, this is going to be what they're going to be working. However, every year, they have to renew that in the same way. So if they do choose to come back 100% of the time, they, they would just let us know.
They can, they can, okay.
Because these are all voluntary, so they're all their choice, and they're not disciplinary. Disciplinary ones would have like the ID number or something, would have the name.
Right. Okay, all right. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else have anything? I just want to say, you know, like Mr. Urteaga mentioned, on these retirement, 30 years, 35, 30, 31, 39, 35, that is amazing. And I just think that's great that they're retiring. Wonderful for them, but I think it's wonderful. Okay, anybody have anything else? Okay, I'll call for the question. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Mrs. Dabs?
Yes.
Mr. Urteaga?
Yes.
Mr. Aparicio?
Yes.
Ms. Carrera?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Passes 5-0. Okay, on to adjournment.
All right, so move to adjourn this meeting?
I'll second.
Okay, I have a first and a second to adjourn. Anybody have any final comments?
I just want to say, every time I pass by Laurel over here on Lambert, I always miss that tree with the big eyes, because she's had that tree out there, and the big eyes. I know, tree couldn't last, and it was a problem, but I always miss that. Thank you for hosting us, and we'll be back at another site, coming up soon.
Yeah, well, I, I would just like to, to leave, just, I guess, with a question. What are we going to do with, with Scott Avenue Elementary TK Restrooms? I think that's something that we really need to, to hone in, if possible.
Yes, so we will be meeting with the teacher. We have been doing some background work. Like I mentioned, Dr. Sevis did meet with the principals just for the planning of it, and really to discuss some of the concerns that came up. And I have been working also with CSCA to address the needs of our TK instructional aides. So, you know, we, we will be meeting with her to give her that update as well. But we have been doing some work, you know, kind of behind the scenes, trying to gather information to have that discussion.
Right, and I'm sure you guys will flow us in wanted stuff.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'm not sure, I know I came a little late. You did mention why Dr. Patterson's not here.
Oh, he had, he had a personal matter.
So he was not able to be here tonight?
Okay, so nothing's wrong. He's, he's coming back, don't worry.
I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that, but I didn't.
Yeah, okay, I wasn't sure. I came late, so I wasn't sure.
Yeah. Anybody else have anything to say? I want to thank Laurel for hosting us at their beautiful site, and look forward to hosting at other sites in the future. And thank everybody for conserving water and- at other sites in the future, and thank everybody for conserving water, and don't forget to ride your bike. Thank you. The meeting is adjourned? Oh, I called for the question, sorry. Did I call for the question already? Mr. Urteaga?
Yes.
Mr. Aparicio?
Yes.
Mrs. Dabs?
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Hernandez?
Yes.
Ms. Carrera?
Yes.
Okay, passes 5-0. The meeting is adjourned at 7:27?
Good night, everybody.